convene this meeting of the Brookline Board of Selectmen for tonight, Wednesday, December 17th. And we've had executive session and have concluded that executive session. We're on to agenda item number two, which is Selectmen announcements and updates.
Well, I have to say, I will admit, I was a bit distracted this week for a variety of personal reasons. I didn't find a lot of community events going on, but I do believe people are celebrating holidays, which is good.
That's great, yeah.
We should say Happy Hanukkah.
Well, that's absolutely, that's what I was planning to do. Happy Hanukkah, and for everyone's information, the Board of Selectmen will not be meeting next Tuesday, December 23rd, but is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, December 30th. So at this point in time, we should be wishing everyone pleasure, joy, good health, and happiness in whatever holiday they happen to be observing.
Cheers. And I will put in a plug again for our town employees' toy drive.
Oh, right.
They collect new, this is the twentieth year they've been doing it, they collect new toys, the town employees wrap them.
I forgot mine today.
Yeah, I forgot mine too. They wrap them, they give them to Brookline families in need, and these are the drop-off locations, the basement at Town Hall, in the mailroom, the police department for his floor, health department at the veterans' office, and at the council of aging. And anyone who wants to contribute or ask questions about the program, call Town Council's office at 617-730-2190, or Tim Sullivan at 617-730-2186. It's Tracy in Town Council's office. Deadline for donations is Friday, December 19th. And by the way, if you know someone in need of these presents, let them know about that as well. Anything further by way of announcements? Great. We do have two people signed up for public comment. I wonder, is Andrew Shalit here?
I am, but I don't need to speak.
Okay, thank you. And Elizabeth Erdman?
Yes.
And are you ready to speak?
Yes.
Good.
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Liz Erdman, and I'm a Pierce parent and also a member of the Pierce School Council. And I would just like to voice my support for a fully funded override and for 100 percent of the devotion project to be funded through debt exclusion. I think the fully funded override is necessary to give our students an excellent education, quite frankly, above the level that we're educating right now. So I will say, having children in second, sixth, and eighth grade at Pierce, there's a huge difference in the experience of my second grader versus what my eighth grader had six years ago in the same school. And Pierce has so much soul, so much support of the parent community, but when it rains, they sit in their classrooms and play games. Many days, there's no lunch when they go to the cafeteria because it's all sold out. There's no roving aides to help in the classroom, so if kids are misbehaving, and during storytime, he might not hear the story. Say, "Kids were really loud and, you know, had to kind of deal with that, and we didn't have the story today." Like, there's a lot of balls dropping just in this short time period, and I know there's crunches everywhere, but even if it looks like we're pulling it together from the outside, you can see on a daily basis how tough it is to manage everything in such a big school and with so many kids. So I would just like to say, moving forward, I think this is a great time to show the leadership that we need to see to get this override, to get this override passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next is miscellaneous calendar, first item on the miscellaneous calendar is the question of approving the minutes from December 4th, 2014 meeting. I know I've submitted a couple revisions.
I had some changes.
I have some comments as well.
Okay, so I would propose that we approve those minutes as revised. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is the question of accepting a grant in the amount of $11,266 from the Brookline 300 Legacy Fund to support improvements to the Michael and Kitty DeCockus Riverway Park Dedication Project. Ms. Gallantyne.
Good evening. Erin Gallantyne, Director of Parks and Open Space. I am pleased to bring before you our first grant for the improvements to the Mike and Kitty DeCockus dedication area in Riverway Park. Brookline, the Brookline 300 Legacy Fund would like to award the town a grant in the amount of $11,266.09. I respectfully ask that the board accept this grant and establish a fund for said project because I also have a pledge from the Emerald Necklace Conservancy Lift Fund in the amount of $25,000 to go towards this. And so we will continue our fundraising efforts for this improvement and also a town celebration and dedication following the work.
Selectman Daley.
Just one quick question. I see it's ranscape improvements, benches, and a dedication plaque. I was wondering about the lighting, too.
So there isn't lighting included in this dedication area? It's on the portion of Riverway Park as you exit the Longwood T-stop and come into the park? And I think that lighting, big picture, as it relates to the entire stretch of the Riverway, is something that should be considered and discussed when we go through the capital improvement plans for Riverway Park, which would follow the bank-to-bank dredging.
Okay.
Erin, I noticed in the grant agreement that the grant period was TBD, to be determined, and begs the question.
Well, we're hoping that with the fundraising, we'll actually be able to construct this dedication area in the spring.
This spring, oh, very good. Other questions? All right. I move that we accept a grant in the amount of $11,266.09 from the Brookline 300 Legacy Fund to support the improvements to Michael and de Kitty DeCockus Riverway Park Dedication Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
You were just anxious to vote aye, I understand.
That's great, and that also includes setting up the funds so other donations can go into that as well?
That wasn't part of our calendar vote.
Can we amend the vote ahead?
Well, we can take a second vote, vote "move" to establish.
Okay. So I follow the move that we establish a fund which will accept further gifts and grants to the Michael and Kitty DeCockus Riverway Park Dedication Project. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And thank you to the Brookline 300 Legacy Fund and the Brookline Community Foundation.
And one just follow-up. The $25,000 matching grant would become active at this time, so people could be encouraged to donate. That would mean that we would urge people to help raise $25,000 in order to get $25,000.
Exactly.
A total of 50 is really the bottom line, that's right.
Yes, good, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Next is item C. It's the question of executing a contract in the amount of $60,825 with Civic Moxie LLC for consulting services in connection with the school site identification study. Ms. Bruton.
Good evening. Kara Bruton, Economic Development Director for the town. The end of October, the Selectmen's Office and the School Department asked planning staff to talk with them about ways that we might help them working, to work with a real estate consultant to identify potential sites for a new K-8 school site. So the, kind of the three departments have been talking, as well as with members from the school committee, the capital subcommittee. And what we have in front of you tonight is a contract with Civic Moxie that we'd like to get your signature and then the school committee to sign off tomorrow night, hopefully. Civic Moxie is a consulting group. Susan Silverberg is the principal. This contract would be for $60,825, would be paid for by the school department's classroom capacity account.
Isn't that a capital account? I don't believe it's the school department's. Correction, it's a capital account, it's a town account.
Okay. The chief procurement officer worked with us, including staff from schools and selectmen to put this out to bid. We've received one response. The end result of what this work would be, we would come back to the Selectmen as well as to the school committee with basically, you know, a report, but the crux of it is to have a table. And on this table would say, here's, you know, three to five sites in town that could be, you know, acquired one way or another, that would be a potentially good site for a K-8 school, for another K-8 school. It could be that some sites that we look at along the way may not work well for a K-8 school site, but might work well for another use, whether it's municipal use or even potentially a private use in the future. So we're hoping to capture not only the end result, but also data and information as we go along. We will be looking at both private properties and public properties. And along with Susan Silverberg, who's a planner, she's done lots of work all over the country, as well as locally. Sandy Stroud is on the development team. She, her experience with project feasibility and financial analysis includes school development, acquisition entitlements for both local, state, and federal agencies, which is an important piece, could be an important piece in this. And then also Peter Roth, who I believe you all know, the developer of the Olmsted site, and he's on the team for his real estate consulting experience, which includes historic rehab experience with, you know, potentially reusing buildings. And what he brings to the team is really knowing the local development cost in the area. So it's an interesting team that was put together that Civic Moxie was found to be highly advantageous by the selection committee. We hope to come back to both the board, possibly joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the school committee in mid to late January. That would be kind of just a check-in meeting where we'd talk about methods and process and where we are, and then report back by the end of February. So this is a very kind of fast study, probably will not affect any override votes, but we do want to get it done and underway.
Thank you, Kara. I just want to clarify one thing. It's, as I understand it, not just for the possibility of a new school site, but possibly the, an addition to an existing school site, too.
Yes, it could be, yep, it could be, you know, site all on its own, or it could be adding on to an existing school site.
Selectman Daley.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, and I think maybe, maybe 2.7 is the paragraph that I'm interested in. I think one of the main problems with building a new school is that the land acquisition costs are going to turn out to be very high. But the other factor is, if we do a taking, I understand that there's quite a bit of uncertainty, there's a possibility of litigation going on for a long time, and I think somehow that that should be reflected in the final report, that there would be. I don't know whether this includes mention of that, but...
So it's estimate of project costs and timelines.
Yeah, and this is just the, kind of the summary contract, but some of the attachments include their response to the proposal, as well as our RFP. And in that specifically, so this table that we're talking about, there's cost, which includes acquisition costs, timeframe, which includes different mechanisms that could be used to acquire property by municipality, as well as complexity. And that's really where we get to your point of, you know, we can do this, but we need to know what that's going to take to do, what's the risk of moving forward with that. And then the other kind of column is, how useful is this site to the school, you know, given where all the other K-8 sites are, the walkability? And these factors aren't going to be weighted, you know, it's going to be, here's the information for you all to decide.
Okay.
And this actually dovetails with Selectman Daley's question, but Section 3.3 says that we, the client, the town, is to designate a representative. Is that you, Kara?
Yes.
Are you the liaison or the contact person?
I will be the lead with this, yeah.
So to the extent we have concerns, like the one just expressed by Selectman Daley, you're the person who's going to make sure that those concerns are vocalized.
Yes, and I will be working closely with Peter in schools and with Sean Cronin, of course, but I'll be the lead for this.
Selectman Woschinski.
I just want to just point out, one thing that this study's going to be doing that B-Space didn't really do is look at sites that the town doesn't own. B-Space, given the timeframe and the constraints we were working under back in that process, looked mainly at town-owned sites. So that's how this is different than what the B-Space did back then. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Okay. I agree mostly, I wouldn't say exclusively, though.
Well, we didn't have the type of data that would be generated by this study. I think that actually is what Selectman Woschinski is trying to say.
There you go.
We did look at non-public sites under B-Space.
Right, we, right, we, yeah, and we approached some owners. We didn't look at the eminent domain option at taking.
We just, we looked at it, but dismissed it pretty quick.
Right, right, right. This would study that a little further.
I do have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
There are, in the scope and budget, there are items listed as meet with client. Who is the client?
We are the client.
The client is the town.
All right, does that mean meet with the Board of Selectmen?
We, there will be, there will be an interim meeting, like I was talking about, and then a report back. Most of the work will be done by staff. This will not be, you know, public meetings or committee-led.
Okay, so that answers my question. This is a staff-level meeting. The client, you are serving as the representative of the town in this process?
Yes. And I also forgot to mention that Selectman Franco did give me two edits, which are now incorporated. There's a one page that was put in your packets with red lines, and those edits are basically to clarify that in addition to the final work product, we do want to make sure that we receive and have the rights to all the interim data and draft work products that we find along the way.
Great, thank you, Kara.
Good additions.
I move that we approve and execute a contract in the amount of $60,825 with Civic Moxie LLC for consulting services in connection with the school site identification study. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Kara, are consultants here? Oh, no, okay, I'm sorry.
No.
Thanks. Next is a question of accepting a rebate in the amount of $16,000 from National Grid as part of our energy rebate program.
Ray Masak Building Department. These are for high-efficiency condensing boilers that we've been installing throughout the town as part of the Green Initiative Plan, and it's a way of leveraging funding. We go out, get a grant, and then we put it right back into the bucket and continue on with energy efficiency initiatives.
Love those rebates. Any questions or concerns about this one? Selectman Franco.
Is the high-efficiency boiler the same as the jockey boilers we've been installing, or is this...
Yes, it's the same as that.
All right.
Can I make just a general comment? Because the town administrator, Mr. Kleckner, had requested that with these various modifications to contracts, and this is not specifically one, but I know Mr. Masak will be coming back later with others, asking for a sort of narrative that goes along with them. It wasn't appropriate for the National Grid rebate, but I was very pleased to see the narratives. And while you're here, I just want to say, it's helpful. I know the documentation that you're accustomed to giving us is detailed and accurate, but having a little bit of the history of the project and how that, whatever your request is at this time, fits into the overall picture has been very useful, and I appreciate it.
I agree with you.
Yeah, no, I agree too. For those of us who are, right, and good execution, right?
Right. Agree with that, and especially in light of, you know, our new tightening of belt that we're going to have to do.
Absolutely, absolutely, very helpful.
Especially to operate at this time. So I move that we accept a rebate in the amount of $16,000 from National Grid as part of our energy rebate program. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next is the question of approving and executing a contract for the Pierce School Electrical Distribution Upgrade and Generator Replacement in the amount of $325,000 with Your Electrical Solutions of East Waymouth. Mr. Masak.
Yes, to modernize the electrical distribution system, it's about 50 years old and has Federal Pacific panels. Federal Pacific went out of business in the 1980s, and I highly recommend, when we have this opportunity through the CIP, to replace said panels. We received 11 bids, we got very favorable bids, well under our CIP allocation.
And that was actually very useful additional information, for which I certainly am very grateful.
That's exactly why this needs to be done.
Right.
That's the right question at the right time, and we can keep score with that information. So, other questions or concerns from Selectmen?
We're just curious to know if this is going to disrupt activities in the school building, or it can be done sort of outside of active hours?
I can answer that question. The principal, Charlie Simmons, head of our facilities, set up a meeting with the principal, and she basically said we could work during the vacations only. So there'll be minimal disruption and then complete the project and the settlement.
Okay. I move that we approve and execute a contract for the Pierce School Electrical Distribution Upgrade and Generator Replacement in the amount of $325,000 with Your Electrical Solutions. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next one is another school item, and it's the question of approving and executing a contract for elevator modernizations at the Lawrence and Pierce Elementary Schools in the amount of $415,000 with Enterprise Equipment Company, also of Waymouth, Mass.
Again?
They're lucky.
Favorable bids?
Waymouth's getting all of our businesses.
When we bid this, we put in alternate because we felt we might not be able to get the second elevator in, but the bids came in very favorable, so we'll be able to do both elevators. Both elevators are well over 40 years old, and again, it's part of our modernization, get the infrastructure up to date.
Wow, if the bids are coming in good, Mr. Kleckner, you might think about the elevators in this.
She's thinking.
Right.
We are working on, that is our next project.
So, and again, this one is well under the appropriation, which we had set aside for this, so that's good, good news as well. There are no questions or comments. I move that we approve and execute a contract for elevator modernizations at the Lawrence and Pierce Schools in the amount of $415,000 with Enterprise Equipment Company. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And, oh, another school item. We've got a change order, question of approving a change order. This is a credit for $1,537 for work completed by Systems Electrical Services in connection with the Baker School Fire Alarm Control Panel Replacement. Mr. Masak, again.
This was a complete surprise to me. Don't get the engineer mad. There was additional work. In my assessment, additional work was done, but the engineer felt that was discounted and went ahead, and it's more based on device count and came up with the credit. And System and Electrical bought into it, and so we're offering the credit.
All right, well, $1,500 is welcome, especially, you know, add that to the money we saved in the last two items.
Right.
We're turning a profit here, finally. All in favor of accepting the change order, accepting and approving a change order in the amount of $1,537 credit for work completed by Systems Electrical Services in connection with the Baker School Fire Alarm Control and Panel Replacement. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Is that's it for you, Mr. Masak?
No.
That's not. Mr. Quigley.
Mr. Masak will be back for item aye.
Next item is item H. Question of approving change order number one in the amount of $6,097.74 for work to be completed by GVW Inc. in connection with the Lawrence School Classroom Edition.
Good evening, Tony Quigley with the Brookline Building Department. This change order, it consists of, it's change order number one for Lawrence School Classroom Edition, the contract with GVW Incorporated. It consists of four items: repair of damaged clay pipe at the stairs, steel lintel at existing gym door, relocate wall hydrant, and replacement of disturbed soils under the first-floor slab. And the total amount of those four items is $6,097.74.
Selectman Daley.
Yeah, I did have one question. The pipe that was found to be damaged when exposed, we did a lot of work at the Lawrence School just a few years back. Was this part of the new stuff, or was this old stuff?
No, this is old. Everything we're doing now is in the parking lot area, which we didn't touch during this.
Okay. Anything further? I move that we approve change order number one in the amount of $6,097.74 for work to be completed by GVW Inc. in connection with the Lawrence School Classroom Edition. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Back to Mr. Masak. Item number aye, or letter aye, is the question of approving change order number one in the amount of $20,119 for work to be completed by GTC Construction Management in connection with the Fisher Hill Gatehouse renovation and Comfort Station. Ray.
Yes. This consists of four items. The first item, we removed existing window frames, so we could see what the existing condition was under the existing window frames. We do have a window package out, which is partially funded through the Mass Historical Commission, and that will, the bid opening will be this month. Second item, this project was a stabilization project, so we found the foundation below grade, which is going to be filled in during the park project, needed some work. So that's basically cutting and pointing. CFP4, again, when we took out the brick infills, the existing window opening needed work. Also, to alleviate any more water getting into the building, we're putting on some brownstone caps on the, the brownstone caps, which are part of the restoration of the wall that we're doing. And then also, we're doing a window opening repair for the project.
These windows are proving to be a very expensive proposition, and we've talked about them before. I see Ms. Gallantyne's still here. Any thoughts on what we're going to be doing with this edifice once it's done?
Well, what I can say is, actually because of the tremendous oversight from Ray, the terrific work that this contractor is doing, and also the grant that we have for the windows and doors, I think we're going to be closer to finding a public reuse opportunity for this building. And it may just start with, you know, having a floor, and we'll have some lighting, and people can go in and see the building, and we could have some seating for people to have lunch, you know, in the shade or out of the sun. But I think that following this project, we'll be able to really engage in a conversation about, you know, the best public reuse, and certainly work towards partnerships with the Waterworks Museum and working with preservation to have some really meaningful interpretation and educational opportunities within the building.
I mean, I just, I've said this before, but I think it's essential, are we going to be here in a few, you know, when things aren't used, they get neglected, and we'll be, a future Board of Selectmen will be here in 10 years, replacing windows or some other structure again unless this has a purpose.
I think you'll be pleased we're actually much further along with stabilization and improvements to the building than we originally thought we might have, might have been.
It's a beautiful building. It's not suitable for a nice school, however.
No.
I wonder if we could squeeze a beep classroom in there?
Yeah, who knows? Any other questions?
I just follow up and say, I do think that there will be interest on the part of the Waterworks Museum, which is very interested in any artifacts that have to do with how the eastern part of the state got its fresh water, and that gatehouse is a part of the whole story. So, you know, it's also related, in a way, to the Brookline Reservoir and the gatehouse there. So there's a connection that can be established. And whether or not it becomes something more than a place for picnicers, I'm betting that once it's all done and people find it attractive, that may be also a very reasonable, you know, option to pursue. After all, across the street, we have a school that teaches catering and food, Newbury College.
Yep. That's, Newbury College is a great suggestion and maybe they should be approached about, if they ever use for it. I see a nod and a smile, so I think that may be done. Any other questions? I move that we approve change order number one in the amount of $20,119 for work to be completed by GTC Construction Management in connection with the Fisher Hill Gatehouse Renovations and Comfort Station. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Item J is the question of approving change order number two in the amount of $5,500 for work to be completed by Patriot Restoration in connection with town hall, garages, repairs, phase four, which never seems to end. Mr. Quigley?
Phase four will end with this change order if you approve it tonight. This is, as you said, change order number two with Patriot Restoration Incorporated in the amount of $5,500. It includes repair of a downspout that was found to be broken and the, once the asphalt was removed. Additional subsurface drain, removal and replacement of 27 linear feet of cast iron pipe. Fill removal, additional fill removal on the stair landings. And credit for deleting work at the town hall building that was found to be no longer needed. I might also say that, as you recall, this was a number of year, multi-year project, phase four. And I think all of the work was planned several years ago and I'm happy to tell you that we're at the end of it and we were within budget. Assuming you approve this change order tonight.
Okay. Any idea what the balance of the original appropriation is?
Zero.
Right down to the last dollar.
Yep. Right down to the last dollar. It's gone.
Questions or concerns?
It's a little suspicious. I know.
We're pretty good at estimating.
Right.
Okay. Seeing then, I move that we approve change order number two in the amount of $5,500 for work to be completed by Patriot Restorations Inc. in connection with town hall, garages, and repairs, phase four. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Moving on to item K. It's the question of approving and executing a contract amendment. This is number two, in the amount of $36,300 for work to be completed by HMFH Architects in connection with the Devotion School Renovations and Additions. Mr. Quigley again.
Yes, this is contract amendment number two, as you said, with HMFH Architects, in the amount of $36,300. This had been anticipated work that was, we, that it was felt would need to be completed once the building, the basic building footprint had been determined. And as you all know, we've been in a multi-month, perhaps a year, in getting to the point where we know what that's going to be. A lot of hard work from a lot of many, many people. And so, you know, there's going to be some adjustments probably to the footprint, but it was felt that we need to do additional test bits and borings to gather additional geotechnical information for structural bearing capacity of the soils, to do our best to due diligence, to find unknown conditions such as tunnels, foundations, and also to do additional work on the found oil that we have on the site.
And can I just add that one of the discoveries was an existing rather large tunnel?
Yes.
That runs under the 1913 building. I guess to connect that to the former wings because it's an old tunnel, is that right?
I believe it's actually, it, yes, it's an old tunnel and it runs in front of the building, along the foundation, at least part of the building. And it's a steam tunnel, steam line tunnel. And I believe it's still active because if you look in the hole and you look towards the 1954 building, it enters, steam lines enter into the crawl space under that building. So this is all useful in an attempt to make sure we do our due diligence to avoid as best we can unforeseen issues when we get into construction.
So this change order today might prevent other change orders once we're under construction?
That's the hope and the goal, and I believe it will help in that regard.
Okay. Other questions? I move that we approve and execute the contract amendment number two in the amount of $36,300 for work completed by HMFH Architects in connection with the Devotion School Renovations and Additions. So it's already completed?
Yes.
Already completed, okay. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Yes. And item L is the question of approving change order number two in the amount of $2,463 for work to be completed by Wes Construction Corp. in connection with fire station number seven structural repairs. Mr. Quigley again.
Yes, change order number two, $2,463.81, the contract with Wes Construction Corporation. It includes added heat detected to the fire alarm system, saw cutting of overhead door entries at the slab where it meets the foundation wall, and additional plumbing work interior and exterior to the building with regards the oil and gas separator. And credit to delete certain masonry and concrete work in the basement of the building that was included in the unit cost of the project but ultimately determined by the design engineer as to be not needed for the completion of the project.
All right. How much left in the appropriation on this one?
I don't recall off the top of my head. I'd have to double check that. I don't know what that is.
But this is the final change order?
That's the final change order.
So presumably something, presumably something is left in that.
I believe there is, but I just don't have those numbers with me.
Okay. I'd like to propose that in the future, when we do get to the end, that the selectmen get a report and a final number, so maybe we can have that information shared next week at our next meeting. Any questions or comments? I move that we approve change order number two in the amount of $2,463.81 for work to be completed by Wes Construction Corp. in connection with fire station seven structural repairs. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. If you're keeping score, you're welcome. Thank you, Tony. The, if you're keeping score, the item M on our agenda was a duplicate to item H, so we can cross that off the list. And item N is a request for a one-night hour extension for the Respect Our Hospitality LLC, which does business as Fairstead Kitchens, to extend their all kinds alcoholic beverage license and common victual license for a New Year's Eve celebration, extending the hours from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And, Selectman Franco, I think you said you wanted to accuse yourself on this one?
No, I filed a conflict of interest disclosure, appearance of conflict disclosure. I went to high school with one of the owners of Fairstead Kitchen, but I've spoken to him twice in 13 years.
Oh, I don't think we should have told you.
I don't even think you had to do that, but I appreciate that. I don't see anybody here on it, but it's very uncontroversial, so I move that we approve the request of Respect Our Hospitality LLC, DBA Fairstead Kitchens, Andrew Foster, manager, holder of an all kinds of alcoholic beverage license as a common victual at 1704 Beacon Street for an extension in their hours on New Year's Eve from 5:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Happy New Year. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Last miscellaneous item is the question of accepting a grant in the amount of, and the calendar's wrong in this respect, $1,700,000, not $17,000, from Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation Funded Partnership Grant for the construction of the Washington Street Route 9 pedestrian and bicycle crossing project. Ms. Galentine?
So I'm really pleased to be before you again with another grant opportunity. By way of a little bit of background, in 2011, the Board of Selectmen led a planning process to look at improving connections along the Emerald Necklace. And we had a very thorough, comprehensive process with a lot of participation, multiple boards and commissions and participation as well from the Department of Conservation and Recreation and feedback from the LMA, also from work closely with the city of Boston. And in 2013, the Board of Selectmen voted to move forward with the Route 9 crossing portion of the enhancements. And so with that, the Department of Conservation and Recreation has been a partner with us since the beginning. We received about $150,000 in partnership grant funds that we matched with community development block grant funding to get through design development and into construction bid documents. And they are very eager to continue to work with us on this and would like to partner with us moving forward on the construction. A couple of points to add here is that the project area itself goes from Olmsted Park across Washington Street, Route 9, into River Road and River Area. And a good portion of the land is Commonwealth of Massachusetts land and we are working on both ramps that go up to the parkway, so we're making significant safety improvements. One is teeing up the on-off ramp that goes from Pond Ave onto the parkway to make a much safer crossing. It's going to be safer for vehicles, safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. And also, we are eliminating the off-ramp on River Road, which again, will provide significant safety improvements. The DCR feels that we are more nimble and able to see this quickly through to completion and so would like to continue to work with us on this. One caveat I have is that we're currently working with kind of their phase of getting to the end of the calendar year and then also looking at construction completion timelines and the fiscal year. So there is a small possibility that we would not be able to execute this at this point in time, but if we're able to resolve that, we'd like to be able to move quickly. And hence, I respectfully ask that the Board accept the grant and authorize the town administrator to execute the contract.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Galentine? No, I have one. Oh, go ahead.
So does this get us the funding we need to do the whole project or are we still short?
It gets us all the funding to do the project.
Oh, wow.
I thought you were going to ask this question, which is, is it dovetailed with the other improvements that are being discussed around Brookline Place?
Yes, absolutely. The projects have always been moving along together and are very well coordinated.
Good.
What about specifically with the demolition of the pedestrian bridge? Is that happening?
Not related.
It's not directly related, but not too far away. And while we're on the subject of Brookline Village and Gateway East, when are we going to see that bridge come down?
I'm not, this spring? I'm not sure, actually.
I think it's going to happen this spring. I believe we have a, we're drafting the RFP for the construction bid right now.
Okay. Good. Any other questions? I move that we accept a grant in the amount of $1,700,000 from the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation Funded Partnership Grant for the construction of the Washington Street Route 9 pedestrian and bicycle crossing project. All in favor say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Happy holidays. Next item number, we're onto our regular calendar now, and item number six is a resolution honoring the Speech Improvement Company on their 50th anniversary. Now, I got to make my own disclosure here too. Dennis Becker was my high school teacher and so, and how am I doing, Dennis? Okay, am I speaking or?
I did have a disclosure.
And he's, I'm a huge fan, so I'm in favor of this resolution before I've even heard it. Is it someone going to present it or that can be me? Well, Dennis, why don't you come up?
I think it should, I would nominate that Chairman Goldstein make the presentation.
50 years, Dennis?
Unbelievable.
Talk to Becker?
Yes, I know.
Tell us, give us the whole history.
Well, I won't give you the whole history, but I can do it in 60 seconds.
Just the highlights then.
But my wife and I started the business 50 years ago and we moved into Brookline 48 years ago or something. We've been in town a long time. Been on that corner in Washington Square for almost 40 years. And perhaps many of you have driven by there and wondered, what are they doing there?
Why do they have that bench out there? What did they do with the bench?
What is that? Yeah. So we've had a lot of iterations of that window in the front. We've won many awards, the window. And inside, we do work that deals with people who talk as part of their job. And you are performing right now in front of some of the best speech coaches in the world right here, taking some of your comments and looking at you. I'm sure I'll hear about all this afterwards, what kind of critiques they have. We have over the years worked with many folks.
We'd probably rather not get the feedback.
Maybe not, yeah. We've worked with a lot of folks from Brookline, obviously. Our clients come from all over the world and we're delighted to bring them to Brookline. And when they come here, we hear an awful lot of nice compliments about the town and the way the city, the town looks and where we're located. And of course, the amenities in Washington Square have been great for our clients from out of the country and so forth. And we've worked with many of the folks who work with the town. So there are a lot of folks who are employees and who are representatives of the town that we've worked with, including, well, let's go as far as a presidential election. There was somebody here one time who ran for president. We've worked there and we've been in three presidential elections. But anyway, this is what we do. We work with folks who talk as part of their job and our clients are from all over the world. And this is our 50th year. And next week at this time, we will officially turn over the leadership of this company from me as the CEO to the new CEO, who happens to be my son sitting right there. He'll be the new CEO starting next week. And it's been a delight to be here, really. We are very pleased and people love coming to Brookline and they love what's happened in the town. And it has to do with a lot, of course, of what you and the Board has done over the years. So we're very pleased to receive this. I want to thank you very much for the honor of getting it.
And let's not forget Paula, who's unfortunately left us, but she was a big part of this organization from the very start and a wonderful woman too.
Couldn't do it without her. She was my wife, obviously, and we started it 50 years ago. You know, frankly, when we started the business, there was no such a thing as what we do now. There were two things in the world to do coaching like we do. One was Dale Carnegie and one was Toast Masters International. It took us two years even to get listed in what was then called the Yellow Pages. We don't have those around anymore. They didn't know how to put us in there because we weren't a therapy group, we weren't a clinic, we weren't a hospital, we weren't a school. So they didn't know quite how to list us. It took us two years to get in there. But once we were in, it was fine. I mean, now we're known all over the place and we couldn't have done it without her. She passed away unfortunately two years ago. We were, I had 52 years with her. It was wonderful. 50 of those years as part of the company. We started the company because the two of us wanted to work together. We went through school. She was studying speech pathology. I was studying speech education and broadcasting. And we got married in college and after college, we wanted to work together. How do you do that? Start a company. You know.
A model that we are now hearing quite a lot about, but people probably didn't discuss very much in 50 years ago.
Very, very little.
Entrepreneurial and...
Yeah, very little. And, you know, it was a business that nobody had really heard of, so we were kind of starting from scratch, trying to tell people what we do. Can't call it Becker and Becker Associates, what the heck that is? So the Speech Improvement Company was born because it tells people exactly what we do. And she was the heart and soul of the company. And when she passed away, it took us several months to figure out that it would have taken three full-time people at least to do the job that she was doing herself. So this is something I accept, of course, in her honor more so than mine. She was really the heart and soul of the whole company. We miss her tremendously. But we're carrying on. The tradition's going to carry on with the family and hopefully in another 50 years,[1791.63] The tradition's going to carry on with the family, and hopefully, in another 50 years, they'll be back for another anniversary, and I'll be off to another anniversary somewhere else.
And I hope Jake and Elwood Blues Brothers are going to remain in their position.
They're still there. Jake and Elwood are still with us. They're in the window at the moment. They're going to come back out.
That's important.
And over the years, you know, we changed that window. The building beside us at 1600 Beacon, it used to be a lot of elderly folks there. Whenever we changed the window, if we took out something that they liked... (knocking) What happened to the, where are you going to put the? You know, we heard about it right away. So it's become, and it's not uncommon for us to travel somewhere in the world and meet someone and say, I went to BU. Are you, most of college was my school. Are you the ones that have that weird window? Yeah. So we're delighted to be here, and we don't know how long we're going to be here, but in the meantime, we thank you for recognizing us.
Thank you. And thank you for my high school education as well. And congratulations. Anybody else before I read the resolution?
You know, Kenny, I did, I don't know if you guys know this, but I did 17 years at Brookline High School. Kenny was one of my students and many others. And that's while the Speech Improvement Company was still working. We were growing and so forth. Bob Sperber was the guy who actually put me out of the high school. He said to me one time, he's looked 17 years, you've done a lot. We started the broadcasting business. We put up a debate team. We had national debate championships. We started that TV studio that's there now, and on and on and on. And he came to me one day, and he said, you know what? He said, I hate to say this, he said, but you'd make a lot more money if you were on your own. And I didn't know what he meant. It was kind of scary, after 17 years and loving the high school and the work that we did. But he was right. And every now and then, I see him over at the fireplace, and we commiserate a little bit. He's still one of the greatest guys I know, so we're proud to have him in Brookline as well.
Excellent. All right. Well, I'm going to read this resolution. Whereas Dr. Dennis Becker and Dr. Paula "Broken Becker," founders of the Speech Improvement Company, have been residents and active members of the Brookline community for 35 years. And whereas celebrating this 50th anniversary makes the Speech Improvement Company the oldest communications consulting firm in the United States. And whereas the Speech Improvement Company has served over 1 million people during its 50 years of service to businesses and nonprofit organizations. And whereas the Speech Improvement Company was a co-founder and contributed to the Washington Square Association. And whereas the Speech Improvement Company has enhanced Brookline's reputation through their worldwide presence and served as host to numerous international visitors. And whereas the Speech Improvement Company has contributed to the advancement of the field of communications through continuous research, published books, and syndicated radio shows. And whereas the Speech Improvement Company created the world's first virtual reality treatment for the fear of speaking. And whereas the coaches of the Speech Improvement Company have enhanced the communication skills of citizens of Brookline. And whereas the Speech Improvement Company and her storefront display window have been a landmark on Beacon Street for 35 years. And whereas the mission and activities of the Speech Improvement Company help create a more peaceful world through the improvement of interpersonal communication skills. Be it therefore resolved that we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Brookline, on behalf of the Washington Square Association and the citizens of Brookline, applaud the Becker's contribution to the communications business and for creating a well-renowned business in our community. All in favor of that resolution? Please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Wachinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations. I think a round of applause is in our direction.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Kenny.
We don't have a formal resolution at this point.
We have to have it printed properly and framed, but we'll get it done.
You'll have like a real resolution. $1 million?
Amazing, yeah.
That's like, that's almost as many as Hamburg, as McDonald's.
Yeah, I know. And you've done such a nice job growing up, becoming chairman of the...
Filled out a little bit.
I think he owes it all to you.
Thank you all. Moving on, we have the question of honoring deceased veteran William Leonard McCarthy for his service to his country with a flag-raising ceremony on January 12, 2015. Is Mr. McGrady here?
No.
No, so we're just honoring this one?
Yes, you may recall that this is the new proposal that was approved by town meeting recently.
Yeah.
And this is the first of the, hopefully, many honorees that we'll do, but it does require a formal authority selection.
Good.
Yeah, I just want to add that Mr. McCarthy was the head of, and I always get confused here whether it was the VFW or the American Legion, because they share the same space, but he was the head of one of those organizations for many years. So he's been an active, active... Active advocate for veterans. Yes, exactly.
And this is the very first one of these that we're doing, and I hope that our Veterans Affairs Officer and the families of veterans will take note that this is a process that's and a ceremony that's available, and that we hope that there'll be many, many more of these days of honor. I move that we honor deceased veteran William Leonard McCarthy for his service to his country with a flag-raising ceremony on January 12, 2015. All in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Wachinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is agenda item number eight. We have a number of board and commission interviews, and the first one is David Sterman, who I see here, who's an applicant for the Information Technology and Advisory Committee. David, come forward, please, and tell us about...
Good evening.
I know you, but tell us who you are, what your experience is, and why you're interested in this commission.
I've, let's see, I've been graduate of MIT, both as a bachelor's student and then many years later, as a PhD student at the MIT Media Lab. I've been a software developer at the beginning of my career for, oh, maybe 18 years or so. And for the past 18 years, I've been a CTO for various companies, startups in New York, and Paris, and in Boston, and been involved in technology and software since high school, early high school. I study how technology is used and how it's managed, and my profession is to make that, the use of technology easier for people, organizing technology teams and creating technology for people to use. What else? You know, I'm the person all my family calls up to say, could you fix this? Can you fix that? And so I'm conscious of how people use and can't use technology. So I think, and my interest in serving on this committee is that it's, technology is hard. It looks like it shouldn't be, but it is. And a lot of times, it's gotten wrong, and as a member of the Brookline community, I want to, I'm really interested in technology being of service to the citizens of Brookline, including my children in high school, including me. And, you know, it's like we've got wireless all over, but it doesn't really work. And the websites made huge improvements over time. I happened to meet the CTO of Brookline at some event and talked with him about some of the challenges. I'm a member of, I'm a founding member of the Boston CTO Club. We just had a meeting this morning. We have weekly, monthly breakfasts, and also a founder of the New York CTO Club when I lived there.
Wait, what is CTO?
And a lot of discussions...
Chief Technology.
Yeah. And these are all people running technology organizations. We often talk about how technology works in communities and some of the problems. Also, this summer, or actually, in the month of September, I was consulting with the state of Massachusetts in their technology group, and saw a lot of behind the scenes of the issues that are going on in the state. I don't think Brookline has those issues quite, but I think there's always things that can be done, and hope I can make contributions to where I can.
Good. I mean, I think you're right. I think we don't have those issues, but I also think we've been innovators in the past, and we've been sometimes the first to set the bars in this issue, in this field. Any idea where we're going in the next five years?
You know, I haven't, I don't know enough about the issues or the purview or the scope of the technology committee. I know from experience working with the various technologies used by the high schools, the computer technologies, online technologies, there's a lot of them, and there's a lot of experimentation. Some of it works, some of it doesn't work. I'm not sure what the discussions have been behind the scenes for that. I know that we've changed our parking meters every six months, it seems, and that there've been failed and successful experiments with that, and I'm sure there's a lot of technology that went behind that. Some of the failures perhaps could be avoided. I don't know. And I know the town's website has improved dramatically. I now pay all my, everything online. I'm sure there's more that can be done, and some things seem awkward, but not the worst I've seen. So what I hope to be able to do is, as we look forward to, I think, to have more community access, I think, I'm a member of the Green Dog Program, and there's been lots of stuff that come over my different devices about parks being opened or closed. I think that's a good sign. So just continually to allow people to participate in government, to find out, you know, what they need from government is important.
Good. The questions. Selectman Wachinski, is that a hand up?
I think while in some areas we've been innovators, I think if you look at what other governments are doing, in some areas, we've fallen behind, or other governments are ahead of us. And I'm very impressed with what you could perhaps bring to the committee. Phenomenal background.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know, we'll see. It's always, you know, I have this background, but there are challenges in government, and there's, you just can't go out and...
Working in the public sector is very different than working in the private sector in technology.
But I'm hoping that just understanding that helps, that there's a difference.
Even a question over there, I think.
It's more of a comment than a question. You've spoken a lot about usability and user experience.
Yeah.
One of the trends, not only in government, but in life, is to have more data-driven decision-making, be able to do more online through technology. I would just encourage you to keep an eye on making sure the infrastructure that we have in town is capable of keeping up with the expectations of the citizens of Brookline and the needs of the town in order to utilize and leverage technology to service.
Great. Good, thank you.
I do have a comment.
Selectman DeWitt?
One of the things that I have discussed with our CTO, who's interested, but we've not quite implemented, I'd be curious to hear your thoughts, is to have a user group who would be able to provide regular feedback as the website has changed. I know that they actually have, but on the website, offered people the opportunity to make comments.
Yep.
My own feeling is that there are some rule improvements that could be made, and it would be really helpful if there was a specific diverse group of people who were, in effect, asked to be the testers when changes are made.
Sure.
And I just wonder how you would respond to that sort of idea.
It's sort of an obvious thing for me that you'd want to do that. A lot of technology is built by technologists, and it's built for technologists, because that's, of course, you should click that button.
I have several in my family. I've had personal experience with things like that.
Yeah, so it's like, what do you mean, you don't know that that's the button you're supposed to click? It's in the left corner. And you need to have this sort of feedback from people who are really going to use this and need it, and run through how it might work for them. You want to actually do that even before you build it. You want to do paper tests. And it really depends on, your ability to do that depends partly on your patience, your, the funding you have.
Your timeframe.
And your timeframe. That's partly the patience, you know, are you willing to take the time to do it? But it doesn't take that much time. And there are clever ways to do it. You've got people coming through the town hall all the time. You could grab someone for a couple of minutes and say, here, here's a cool demo. Try it out. You could do what's called A/B testing, where you do two versions of it, and people randomly land on one or the other, and you can see, if you're trying to see if they can get to, say, a payment site. So you do two versions of it, and the more people, you can watch the clicks, and the more people that click around and don't go directly to the payment thing, then you know that which one of those versions might work better. But again, that takes time and a little bit of energy, and maybe the staff to program it that way.
That's certainly something I think would be beneficial, and I think when you have a service that's a municipal service, where we have a sort of obligation to do our best to make our consumers, our residents and public feel comfortable with whatever we're offering them by way of technology.
Yeah. So I think the feedback is really important, and there's lots of ways to get it.
Great. Thank you, David. We're not going to make our appointments tonight, but we will very soon, and we'll let you know as soon as we do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Next, we have a candidate for appointment to our newly-formed noise bylaw committee. Is Beth Schuman here? Good evening, Beth. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving in this committee.
My name is Beth Schuman, and I'm a fairly new resident. I moved into the town back in December of 2013. Just happen to love Brookline. Originally moved in from Southborough. My involvement, I've always been involved in the Southborough school system, so this is a new, certainly new category for me. I'm a full-time Realtor with RE/MAX Unlimited here in Brookline. I'm very passionate about working with people, seeing results. Worked in pharmaceutical sales for 20 years, Procter &amp; Gamble, Campbell, OraB, L'Oréal. Very attention-detailed and very people-oriented. I have a couple of personal situations where I had interest in this particular committee. I live at 168 Cypress, and there's quite a bit of new construction that's taking place around me. So we're looking at gut renovations of older homes that have been purchased, and I've noticed that some of the contractors, when they're supposed to be starting during the weekday at 7:00 AM or 8:00 AM, they don't start, they start much earlier. So that's one of my concerns, to make sure that the law is abided by, and at the same time, whatever can be done in terms of just general noise, I'd like to have an involvement. So in a sense, I'm one of these people, I'm very, I have a stick-to-it personality, want to get things done, I work great in a team. As I said, a new resident, lived out in the Metro West area for 30 years, empty nester, very passionate about getting to know the community. I'm coming in from a small town into a much larger area, because we just, my husband and I love Boston, we love the surrounding towns here, and I need a place where I can call home and I can see, I can make change. I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce, so yes, I've been active for the last year.
Great.
So that's where I'm at.
So I'm going to ask you a question you might find obscure.
Please.
What do you know about leaf blowers?
They have to be run at a certain decibel. They have to be maintained. They can't be over, I don't know the decibel range, and I certainly am willing to learn all those facts.
Part of the charge of this committee, in fact, its reason for existence, actually, has more to do with our leaf blower law and some, it's been proposed that there's some inconsistencies in it and some need for improvement of it. Part of the charge is also what you described, which is making sure that our enforcement provisions and procedures are efficient and to regulate excessive noise. But there's a very practical purpose for this committee to, and that is to kind of explore the inconsistencies in our leaf blower law and wanted...
I'm one of these, I love just digging down into information. That's what it's all about.
Very good.
So, yeah, I'd be happy to take on the challenge, for sure.
Great.
I work long hours. As a matter of fact, I'm going to be late. I have a client I'm meeting in my office at 8 o'clock this evening, so...
Oh, sorry about that.
That's fine. I needed to be here.
We're going to speed this interview up right away then. Any other questions for Ms. Schuman?
No, I think we can let her go to her meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. A lot of town buyers, they want to buy a home here in town.
Check to them.
Do they have kids?
They do. They have four children. Good to meet.
Wait, did you just say four?
Yes.
Okay, discouraged.
I certainly will, but I just, I really want a place to call home where I have an involvement and I can make a change. I would take on any committee. And I'm, I mean, I'm not one of these old-fashioned sticklers about noise, but whatever needs to be upheld, needs to be upheld. And can I ask you a question? In terms of people that are using leaf blowers that are not under the certain regulation, what is a typical fine for like the first offense, the second offense, if they're?
I don't know.
It's progressive. It starts small and...
Yeah, I think we have a major problem with enforcement. Which is to say, it is not our enforcer's favorite thing to enforce.
I think we heard at last town meeting that there have been almost no fines imposed.
Well, let us stop on the list and just be cognizant of the situation.
That'll probably be one of the issues that this committee tackles.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Get back to business. Next is Richard Nangle, who's also a candidate for appointment to the Noise Bylaw Committee. Good evening, Richard.
How are you?
I'm great, thank you. Well, tell us about yourself and why you're interested in serving in this.
Well, I've been living in Brookline for 23 years. I'm a former reporter for the Worcester Telegram, and moved on to do public affairs for the state. And I've been a town meeting member for 19 years. And I think I'd be a natural for this committee because in the past year, I've taken on the leaf blower issue. And I've been moving around the town precinct, mostly South Brookline, but the problem's everywhere, as we know. I've made a lot of calls to the police. I found rampant non-compliance over the summertime. I know that this is the Noise Bylaw Committee and not the Leaf Blower Committee, and I understand the difference between the two. But I also know that there's some overlap issues that you might want to look at.
Good. Questions for Richard? So I'm aware that you've been involved in this issue, and I think glad that you came out for this because I think it's quite appropriate.
We need the help.
Do you have your own decibel meter?
I have two.
Oh, wow.
And is that the American or the European?
Well, it's, you know, it's on the iPhone, so who knows? Who knows how accurate it is? But I've been taking them around, and I did two things. I looked at non-compliance over the summertime. And the other thing I did was I looked at decibels. They never met the decibels, but I felt that if I report somebody, why am I reporting them for decibels when really the issue is non-compliance? I didn't want to muddy the waters. So I didn't even get into decibels. I just dealt with, you know, it's summertime, you're not supposed to be doing this, and we need to stop it. And, you know, I think you all know it's true. If you just sit out in your backyard or out on your terrace on a summer day and just listen, it's over there, and then it's over there, and then it's over there, and then it's behind you, it's all day long. Some of the larger properties in South Brookline, they'll come in at 8:00 in the morning, and they won't stop until 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon, literally. Half hour for lunch, then they're right back at it. It's unbelievable. And it's changed so much over the years. It's really, it's astounding. It really has caught my attention.
Okay. Any other questions for Richard? Well, thank you again for coming out, and we'll let you know when we make the appointments.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening. Clara Bachelor informed us that she needed to postpone her interview for Park and Rec Commission, and Paul Bell also postponed his interview for Preservation Commission. Next, we have Gidi Saidi in for the Preservation Commission, but I don't see Gidi here. Gidi, can you hear me? She's definitely not in the room, so. So we're on to our last interview then, which is a candidate for appointment to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission, Wesley Chin. Mr. Chin, good evening.
Good evening.
And would you tell us about yourself, your qualifications and experience in this field in particular, and why you'd like to serve?
Sure. So I think my interest in serving on this commission is directly related to my work here in the Brookline Health Department on tobacco control. Through my work with the Health Department, I've had the opportunity to work with many different cross-sections of our citizenry here in Brookline. In particular, work with the Brookline Housing Authority in promoting and implementing a smoke-free policy over the past year and a half or two has made me realize that there's just a great need to provide a voice and to advocate for some of the, I guess, more marginalized populations within our community. I guess an example would be Matt Baronis and I went around and we hosted a number of resident meetings to talk about the smoke-free policy. And there were lots of concerns about it, how it would be enforced, how, you know, people would be kicked out of housing. And we listened to a lot of people, and we realized that some of their concerns were around quitting smoking. And so I then went back to Dr. Balsam at the Health Department and talked to him about how we really needed to think about a way to help people become a little more comfortable with the policy that we were coming up with. And so he came up with the brilliant idea of sponsoring smoking cessation options or resources for residents. And so largely through that, I've come to the, I guess, realization that there's, I guess, you know, a significant segment of our population that may not be heard as much as others, and it's something important to do in a community that's as, I guess, wealthy as Brookline is. So it's my hope to just serve as an advocate and to be a voice for others.
Good, thank you. Questions for Mr. Chin?
I'm sort of interested in the fact that you represent, or your job covers a number of other communities. And so I'm kind of interested in knowing whether you feel you're in a good position to sort of look at Brookline kind of through a lens from here and from the outside as well. I'm not trying to pin you down to anything specific, but just simply to say, you move around in different municipalities, many of us don't. Does that help you with that perspective at all?
I definitely think it does. You know, the five communities that I work in are all very different. So I definitely work with different populations, and they each have different needs. And I guess one of the things I do is promote policy development. And, you know, and so in one community, they may not be as public health-friendly, and that's just something that I have to be attuned to when I provide guidance to boards of health.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Chin? Well, usually I end by saying that we're not making appointments tonight, but we'll let you know. But I think we are going to make appointments tonight, so there's nothing further. Thank you for your interest in this, and we'll let you know.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening. Let's see, it is 7:59. Our public hearing for liquor regulation amendment is scheduled for 8:00.
We should invite Mr. Chin back for more questions.
Yeah, I know, we should have one more question for Mr. Chin.
8:00.
Yeah, I think I got 8:00 too. This should be a brief item, but we'll see. This is a public hearing and vote on amending the town liquor license regulations to be consistent with the state regulations, allowing package stores to open at 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. This is a further inroads on our, on our blue laws.
Right.
I'll open the public hearing, and Selectmen DeWitt, since you're co-chair of our licensing committee, maybe you...
All I can do is say that we've been reviewing the alcoholic beverage regulations in Brookline, and this is actually state-driven, but we are in favor of accepting it. And I do believe that our local package stores are very interested in the opportunity to open at an earlier time on Sunday. That having been said, each one, I believe, will have to come to us with an individual request indicating that they would like to accept the new hours. And we need to adopt this in order to be able to approve those.
Note that it's a difference of two hours. Currently, it's 12:00 noon that a liquor store can open. We'd be moving it to 10:00 a.m. Selectmen Franco, I see, consternation.
I seem to remember that we've, this question has come before us in past weeks, and we have approved or authorized the opening two hours earlier.
Because the state permitted it. So this is to make our regs consistent with the state. But basically, once the state approved it, A/B/C implements it, it's, we're under obligation to do that.
As I've said in the past, I like this particular blue law and think that 10:00 a.m. is a little too early to be selling alcohol on Sunday morning. So I was upset or frustrated when I saw the state pass the law over the summer, and for the record, I liked the noon opening.
And you're allowed to vote against this.
Wow. And I think our chairman said this was an inroad into the blue law, so I'm a little surprised by what I'm hearing by my colleagues. There's a little Puritan backlash here on the board.
Well, the truth is, I'm actually sympathetic to that position for no other reason than what day it is of the week, you know, out of the seven. I kind of feel like it's not a bad thing to have a day where you don't do everything every day that happens, you know. I understand. I appreciate your view on that one.
Perhaps no liquor store should be open.
I appreciate it, but I'm not bothered by it.
Yeah, not really either. I mean, on Sunday in the summer, you might want to pick up your six-pack of beer before you go off to the beach or something.
From my perspective, it's a little more like we are turning into a place, all of us, I mean, it's not just Brookline, it's everywhere, that there's not a day of the seven, that things are not operating from sort of midnight to, you know, midnight. And anyway, I understand.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is anyone who'd like to be heard on this matter? So raise your hand, and I don't see any input. I'll close the public hearing. And I will move that we amend the town liquor license regulations to be consistent with regulations allowing packaged goods stores and allow a 10:00 a.m. opening on Sundays as shown on page 9.2 of our package. All in favor, say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Woszczynski.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
No.
The chair votes aye.
Symbolic vote.
It's all right.
Moving on to item number 10 on our regular calendar, this is the review of override issues. And I think we've got a PowerPoint for Mr. Klattner or for Mr. Krone?
Yeah, I think we'll both do it, but Sean will begin. And so just as context, what we're trying to do this evening is to provide you with sort of the overview of all that we've been doing, and trying to, to some extent, wrap it up and find out if there's more analysis that the board would like, and to refresh your memory on some of the variables and next steps, including a calendar. So with that, I'd ask Sean to begin with the first several slides.
Okay, so as Mel said, we're going to just kind of summarize hopefully quickly what we've been talking about over the last two plus months, and then close with, you know, what's to come over the next month. So, you know, let's step way back to April of 2014, when the Override Study Committee made a presentation to the Advisory Committee, and these are the sets and numbers that have been used since then. And this was the $12.3 million expenditure plan with all those assumptions and smartphone at the bottom. And there were two groups, two recommendations of the OSC. One was a total expenditure plan of just under $8 million, and one was $10.7 million financed by an override of either $5 million or $7.9 million. And then $2.3 million, both sides agreed on non-tax revenues, and then $600,000 of town efficiencies. And as it says there at the bottom, since then, this has kind of morphed into the so-called 65% package and that 90% package. On October 7th, school superintendent made a presentation about what these recommendations meant for them in their budget. And he introduced two significant items at the time, and those are at the bottom, the major assumption changes, which was one, increase in the wage adjustment for bargaining purposes from 1% to 2%, and the inclusion of $1 million of one-time funds being used by the School of the Power and the Council for this year. So that 12.3, going back to this page, 12.29, became $15.39 million.
Did you, sorry to interrupt, but the other change was going from an assumption of kindergarten classes at 6:30 to an assumption of kindergarten classes at 6:50?
No, according to Peter Road, there was really no cost change in that because of the way it worked through the model. It was negligible, so, you know, it's within rounding. So that wasn't really a driving factor in that. So 15.4, and then last week, we made a presentation, and, actually, hold on a second. Yeah, so last week we made a presentation that summarized a number of changes that had been made since that October presentation. And the major ones are listed there. You know, health insurance increase, assumption rather than 6% in each of the out-years, it was dropped to 4%. Changes to Chapter 78, assumption local receipts, the two major development projects in town, the Red Cab site and Two Brookline Place, primarily timing of those. The town administrator mentioned that the most recent town school partnership agreement that would continue to split enrollment growth 50/50 as we have the last three years with the schools. Prior to that, it was not in any of these assumptions. Last week, town administrator also noted that he'd be recommending that the $550,000 for beat leased costs be moved to the CIP rather than operating, which has the effect of reducing the expenditure package. And then the last change here was the revised info tech figures provided by the schools. So now what you have is pretty much back to that 12.3 number, but, you know, it wasn't done on purpose. This is, you know, a lot of changes that have happened over time, and those being the primary ones.
Though importantly, while some of the, most of the assumption changes reduce the spending, we have one shift of the rent from operating to capital. So that's not an expenditure decrease, it's just a shifting.
Yeah, and we'll show what the impact of that is in a couple of slides. So non-tax revenues and municipal efficiencies is another item that we talked about at a recent board meeting. So once you all determine the expenditure plan you want to fund, there are three ways to fund it. You have the override, new property taxes. You have non-tax revenue, which was $2.3 million, of which there was some concern about, some questioning about, did I even, could you even generate this type of revenue? And then third was town efficiencies of about $600,000, the biggest of which is the soon-to-be-proposed move to modified pay-as-you-throw solid waste program, which would save about $440,000 once fully implemented. So those are the three funding sources available to fund the expenditure plan. And then just to explain again how important those last two bullets are, the $2.9 million total, for each dollar that you don't agree to from those, you have to either increase the override by that amount or reduce your expenditure plan by that amount. So as an example, I just took the 90% funding, which was $11.1 million. If you take the $2.3 million in non-tax and the $600,000 of town efficiencies, it's an $8.2 million override. However, if we can only generate half of the non-tax revenue, then what you're talking about, if you want the same expenditure plan, is an override of $9.35 million. And that's the, you know, the math is showing that $2.3 million divided by two is 1.15 plus the 8.2, and you get to $9.35 million. So it's one example to show how important that variable, the non-tax revenues, in this whole equation.
So the $12.3 million number assumes $2.3 million in non-tax revenue. It would be $2.3 more.
The way that I like to explain it is, that is your expenditure plan. So whether it's, the 12.3 is how much the school has determined is necessary. Then you got to figure out how to finance that. So it's two separate things. So the 12.3 is all in, and then how do you finance that?
So it's the opposite of what I said, actually.
However, I just have to say something that members of the public, even I, find confusing. When you put out the expenditure plans and you indicate three fiscal years, we're talking about something that's cumulative, and the bottom line for each year is an increment of...
And the bottom line for each year is an increment of that final total, isn't that right?
That is right, but I'm, I don't understand the question.
Well, so the question, I think it's more a matter of helping people understand when we talk about what we need to raise. If we say we need to raise $12.3 million and we're only going to spend half of it in the first fiscal year, how do you, how do you account for the difference?
Okay, so let's, let's take, take a hypothetical, just say 12.33, all right? So, you would, if you're going to assume the 12, the 2.9 million, okay? That means you need to have an override of 12.3 minus 2.9, right? That would all be raised in the first year because that's what an override is. So, obviously, that number is much larger than $6.2 million. So, what you're doing the first year, or what would probably be recommended in this scenario like this, would put that to one-time purposes, whether it's additional capital or OPEVs or pension or something like that. So, that the next year, it's out of your base and you have it to then put into the school. And then, the second and third year, on top of that, you have these non-tax revenues to raise.
Right, but, but we're also retiring long-term commitments and we're reducing our obligations in other areas. And I just think it's really important for us to be able to talk about that.
Yeah, if, if that happens, the, the first presentation we made back in September actually showed one scenario where the numbers were almost perfect, that the first year was equivalent to the override amount and then years two and three summed up to the 2.9 million. There was another scenario where you had, I think it was $2 million, give or take, of additional money in the first year that you then do help pay down basically future liabilities. And that is a great plan. If, if the math ends up working up out that in the first year, 6.2 million is needed by the schools and the override is actually just say 8.2 for easy math, then there's 2 million that you could allocate to one-time purposes that have long-term benefits, so. All right, so, let's get to the next slide here. Okay, then we talked about the no override scenario. That was last week. So, we said that when you go through the town school partnership formula and you make all those adjustments that we had talked about, if there's no override, there's, there's $1.36 million of known expenses that would have to be accounted for. You know, it's the teachers in the classroom, it's opening up Old Lincoln School, those types of things. And what the town administrator proposed last week was that the town would absorb half of the cost, which is $680,000. And the superintendent was here and he noted that he has a desire to fund some of the catch-up items, even if the override were to fail. So, whatever amount he funds of those items, the amount of cuts the schools need to increase by the same exact amount. So, for example, and this was the example I think he gave, if he wanted to fund $600,000 of catch-up, that would mean $1.28 million of outright cuts, not reductions in asks or anything like that, but outright cuts. In the school budget, 680 from half of the 1.36 and then 600 from the, from the catch-up. So, you know, that's something I know he's spoken about a couple of times here and it's really important to continue to talk about over the next few weeks as you.
And, and just again, sort of for public discussion clarification, what happens in the municipal budgeting process is that in effect, the school department is assigned a dollar amount for their bottom line and they allocate the line items. And it's up to them to decide how to use the revenues that are assigned for their purposes. Are you including in these numbers though, they, it seems like they have come to some agreement with the extended day programs to charge some rent and they have done a couple of other things that
Well, that goes back to that.
Were going to be revenue items for, on the school side.
That goes back to that 2.3 million dollars of non-tax revenue. To the extent they are able to generate those revenues, the override number goes down. To the extent they can't, that number goes up.
Okay.
Okay, then we talked about debt exclusion on a couple of occasions. Originally, the override study committee had two recommendations. One was for devotion only in an amount equal to the difference between what we had in the CIP, which was the $54 million in the, at the time, updated share or total town share of 77 million. So, debt exclusion of $23 million. Group two said, well, do that, but in addition, you should basically increase the debt exclusion to a level so that you had money to fund the town share of the Driscoll School project. So, that the total for group one was $1.6 million, the total for group two was $4.1 million. Then, we said that those numbers have changed because of the school building, devotion school building committee's recommendation for option one in the updated cost estimates from the architect for option one. It was unfortunately both an upward cost and a downward state reimbursement, which meant that our share would grow to 36.6 million for an annual debt service estimate of 2.6 million. So, group two's number would go to $5.1 million. So, those are the updated figures that we provided. We also noted in the last presentation that one of the reasons why we haven't been before you like we normally would be this time of year presenting a preliminary CIP because there's a number of difficult issues before the school committee that they, I believe, are going to take a vote on tomorrow night to address the short, short-term space needs that they have. And in working with, with the schools, you know, was at their presentation two Thursday nights ago, basically what they're talking about is rental of some space in this, in this general area to help with the Pierce School space needs, modular classrooms at the Baker School and ongoing, in, in those total, about another $200,000 annually. There's some, you know, setup costs upfront on top of that. But our estimate right now, still working with the building department on these, is about $200,000 a year. And then, as I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, the town administrator recommended moving the 550 lease costs for BEEP into the CIP. So, when you take those two items together, you're talking about $750,000 of ongoing expenses for some period of time into the CIP. So, there's no way, unless you want to start significantly cutting back on some other non-school or potentially even school capital appropriations, capital projects, would be to increase the debt exclusion by an amount that frees up the cash equivalent of the $750,000 a year. So, what we're recommending is that the debt exclusion basically be increased by $8 million. Say another way, the $54 million that's been in the CIP for devotion would drop to $46 million. That then frees up the capacity for the annual $750,000 for these items. So, that's what we're talking about tonight. And I put numbers to this right here. So, when you add $8 million to the debt exclusion, you get to $44.6 million. If you go back a couple of slides, it was 8 million less. You see that the debt service figure is estimated at $3.2 million. Okay? Now, what should be very clear, and we're, you know, finalizing the preliminary CIP, hopefully have it for the public and for the board within a few weeks. What is a very important piece of that is that this approach, while it frees up money for, for these short-term items and obviously devotion, it doesn't free up any capacity to afford any significant future caterweight project, whether that be expansion of the Baker School, the Driscoll School project, which as you know, we got the, I guess you call it the rejection notice from the MSBA for that, that project. Whether it's a new ninth school, the study that you approved, the contract you approved early tonight. You know, if, if and when those come out with some recommendations, there's no capacity within the CIP right now to fund those. So, that would mean a, a separate debt exclusion for those projects and/or a very significant alteration to the CIP. In terms of the high school, which is something we all know is coming as well, you'll see that the CIP, very similar to the CIP we presented for the current fiscal year, there's some capacity in there for the high school, which basically is a number that's backed into, that lives within our 6% financing guideline. But then, anything above and beyond that would require a debt exclusion. So, you know, the punchline here is what's being recommended, a $44.6 million debt exclusion funds devotion and funds some, it frees up some capacity for, for some short-term needs, but it does not free up any capacity for any significant future project. And that's obviously a huge policy discussion for the board to have because if you wanted to avoid future, one on, you know, individual debt exclusion votes, you increase the debt exclusion for devotion.
So, so this, this approach is kind of a adjusted version of the group one recommendation for the debt exclusion?
Yes, yep. And just to talk about.
Sean, can I just ask you a question? I mean, we heard from Janet Yellen today that it wasn't exactly totally clear, but probably, I, I think the general consensus was listening to her remarks, that the Fed's interest rates are going to go up either in mid-2015 to early 2016, probably. So, what's the correlation between the Fed raising its rates and our borrowing? Is it a kind of exact correlation or not, not quite so much?
You know, obviously, they're directly linked, ours would go up.
So, it, it might be wise to do a slightly larger debt exclusion to start on some of these other projects when we can get it at the very low interest rates.
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't disagree.
But the, yeah, just speaking for myself, the, the struggle that we've had putting this, you know, soon-to-be CIP out is, you know, if you want to increase that debt exclusion amount, the difficulty is you don't really have a project in the queue that is saying that is.
No, but it's, it's, we do have the devotion school project in the queue and it's a matter of perhaps increasing, yes, the debt exclusion amount and lowering the amount coming out of the CIP so that we would then have some money to start planning or designing some other projects at least.
Exactly, but what I'm trying to say is that's the difficult part, is that there's no concrete, no pun intended, project right, right there that you can say, if you increase this debt exclusion, it's going to fund X. You know, that, and it's because there's so many, you know, balls in the air right now between the ninth school study, you know, the, you know, the Baker School, Driscoll Schools is getting kicked out, you know, I mean, that's just my perspective.
Yeah, but you're talking about increasing the debt exclusion, it hasn't been set yet.
No, I'm, I'm just, yeah, all along.
I consider all the stuff from the override study committee very interesting, but it's advisory. And, and I don't feel like their thoughts.
Well, and I would say, sort of following on Selectman Daly, the one thing, we know about the elementary enrollment and where it is and at what grade level that cohort is now. And therefore, even if you're not clear about how to add additional classroom capacity in K through eight, I think the high school is absolutely going to be needing additional capacity. And so, if one needed to cite a future capital project, that one is incrementally where those kids are going to be in another two years. And if we don't start planning for it now, they're going to be in portable classrooms somewhere.
Right.
Oh, well, fair comments. I would answer that by, let me just skip ahead for a second. I'll come back to this one in a second. So, debt exclusion, impact on the tax rate or tax bill, I should say, at what we're talking about now, at a $44.576 million debt exclusion is about $3.2 million. You see, it's about 1.7% for the average or the median value of properties. I did run the calculation, if you fully exclude a devotion, in anticipation of this conversation, if you fully exclude devotion, you know, that's a 90-plus million dollar debt exclusion, your debt service is 6.4 million, you're talking about a 3.5% increase once this is fully implemented.
So, I, I think, I think you need to look at the total package and what is the tax increase going to yield? And, you know, the higher we, the higher the number we put on the ballot, of course, the, you know, it raises political questions of whether it'll pass.
Yeah, no, I, I do very much appreciate that, but I also think we've taken a long time getting to this point. We've known we had overcrowding issues and we have, you know, very thoughtfully studied what to do about it. And, and, and one of our proposals, Driscoll School, has been rejected by the MSBA. So, you know, I think we, I, I just think that we can't really afford to just say, oh, in two years, when all these kids hit the high school, then we'll start thinking about the high school and study that and.
No, that's being studied right now. We're in the middle of a high school study.
You know, the, the decision is, I think, do we, do we have a separate override, a debt exclusion override for, for the high school? And do we have a separate debt exclusion override for whatever the next elementary project is? Or do we try to put two projects in effect on the ballot by?
Or more of devotion on, on the ballot.
And the technical way to do that is, is putting more of devotion, leaving the.
Well, I'm just trying to point out that if you wait the two years, I'm almost certain by that point, the interest rates will be higher. So, our borrowing costs will go up. So, you, you get a little more for your money now.
No, but that's not the way it works. It's, we're going to be borrowing the same amount of money upfront. We're not going to borrow for the high school until we're ready to borrow for the high school. We're just creating, we would just be creating the capacity within the CIP to borrow in three years instead of having to go to the voters.
No, we might have, if we, if we, if we do the debt exclusion for a larger amount of devotion, you might, you would have some capacity in the CIP to start the initial planning and so forth on some of these other projects.
You're, you're both right. You're both, what, again, it's unfortunate that we don't have a CIP in front of you to really talk about. But one thing you will see is that there will be, just like there was in the current iteration of the CIP, the 15 through 20, that there is money slated for the first phase, which is feasibility and schematic, all right? That would be, you know, that would be coming up. And then, after that is the construction. So, what we're really talking about, you know, when you're talking about planning, you know, as, as Ken said, there is money, there is a study underway now. And then, if, and when an SOI is submitted in the spring and if the MSBA welcomes us into the pipeline, then we would ask town meeting for bond authorization for the feasibility and schematic. What's next then, and that would be afforded within the CIP, what's next then is how do you fund that project? So, if you do increase the debt exclusion amount, you, as, as Neil just said, you increase capacity in the CIP for that project so you don't have to go back to the voters. So, you're both saying things a little differently, but you're saying the same thing.
I guess the point is, you can't borrow for something because there's arbitrage provisions. You just can't park money, you can't borrow money unless.
Borrow in anticipation.
Unless you have a plan to spend it over a period of time. And we wouldn't borrow money if the project wasn't really ready and.
Right, we're going to borrow 100 and whatever million dollars on devotion, whether we put 30 million dollars in a debt exclusion for devotion or 70 million or 90 million.
Just to be clear, we'll be borrowing our share of the 100 and.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
But, but what we're really also talking about is, as a budget matter, is raising sufficient funds that we can pay the debt service on the amount of borrowing.
Right.
And that's the bottom line of either a debt exclusion, which allows us to add the debt service to our tax base or if we have to try to finance it out of our other resources, other revenues. But either way, what we're talking about is how we will fund the interest on our borrowing for whatever capital project happens to be going forward. Right, principal interest, sorry.
So, then just to.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think we also really seriously need to be looking at the Pierce School. And I mean, it's, it's, what I hear is that it's totally overcrowded at Pierce. And, and Baker, we know, is overcrowded. So, I'm saying if we had some money in the CIP to, to kick off a couple of these feasibility studies, we might be glad we had that money available.
So, I, I would be interested in having that discussion as we have the whole picture in front of us and see how this fits in and see what our ask is going to be on the operating side. And then, see what, what we want to put on the debt exclusion side and see what it all adds up to.
I totally agree.
And see if we freak out.
I agree.
Great segue to the first to last slide. Great segue to the first-to-last slide, I already did the last one. So, this is the tax impacts for the operating side, so, you know, what I did up top is just take, you know, the 100% expenditure plan, 90% and the 65% prior to any of the $2.9 million of non-tax revenue and town efficiencies. So, again, these are all for examples, if you had a $12.33 million override, you're talking about a 6.8% impact on the median value of properties. Going down in the 65% figure, it's 4.4. Then what I did is, I said, okay, let's assume 2 million over the three years of that 2.9 million, so whether it's pocket meters, refuse fee, you know, some of the other things that are somewhat doable of that package, then you're talking about a 10.33 base expenditure plan, so 90% would be 9.1 million, and 65% would be 6 million, so just looking at the 9.1 as an example, you're talking about a 5% increase in the tax bill for those median value properties. And we can run this thing for any numbers, you know, over the next month, I'm sure you won't going to want a bunch of different numbers, I mean, very easy to run these numbers and, you know, put grids together for you.
And the 2 million assumption on the non-property tax revenue was somewhat arbitrary, but, you know, I think it's fair to say that we don't believe we could raise the full amount that's been recommended on-
Right, we heard that loud and clear.
I think we're all in agreement with you on that.
But 2 million is probably a fair estimate.
Can you add the debt exclusion to that now?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was right there. So, what we're talking about, which is keeping the 54, the original 54 million, but subtracting eight from it, meaning the CIP funds 46 million of devotion, and the debt exclusion becomes 44.56, 576, you're talking about a 1.7% increase in those median value properties once it's fully borrowed, and I say that all the time because we're going to phase this borrowing in, it wouldn't happen, none a penny of it would hit in fiscal '16, at the earliest '17, but most likely in '18, but once it's fully in, you've got 25 years of that.
Are you thinking about doing bond anticipation notes for portion?
No, no, we would, what we'd do is based on cash flow needs.
Okay, so you're saying my discussion of borrow while the interest rates are low is really moot, because you're not planning on borrowing until the interest rates go up?
As Mel said, we can only borrow, there's certain arbitrage guidelines that you have to follow, and it would be nice if we could go out and borrow 50 million dollars and just sit on it, but either Steve or I or Mel would end up in prison, I think.
Sean, these numbers do not consider the regular tax increase that every homeowner can expect, anyway?
Correct.
Which is 2%, 2.5%, what's the average over 10 years?
Well, we just saw a couple, well, last week, when the rate was set, that the, what was the median single-family impact, 10 bucks?
Four.
Four bucks, right, so it depends, you know, that's the difficulty with saying-
Oh, maybe it was 10 because you didn't vote for one or seven terms.
Just add 2.5% on it, because it varies by year, what's going on in the housing market, commercial market, but the adolescent levy is a-
I understand we don't know, but do we have an average, or?
We can pull that together, yeah.
Well, we do know for fiscal '15.
We know the aggregate levy. Yeah, we know the actual levy increase, but the, like, the average impact by property type, is that what you're?
Yep.
Because we can, that's easy enough.
That's right.
Now, the 1.7% wouldn't be subject to a 2.5% escalator, so the debt exclusion-
That stays-
Right, that stays constant.
While we're on the topic of borrowing, there was some discussion over the summer on the override study committee, and I don't actually recall if this made it into a formal recommendation, of borrowing money and putting it towards our long-term pension obligations. Is that at all reflected in these slides?
No.
I don't think you can do that without home rule legislation.
Didn't we get it?
Wellesley actually did a debt exclusion vote to pay down their OPEPs.
Yeah.
But you need special permission to do that, because it's not a capital.
This was a little bit more complex than-
Yeah, it was extremely complicated. Very thoughtful idea, but it's very, very complicated, and I think that something would have to really-
Investigate more fully before we-
There's risks, there's risks associated with that.
There have been communities who've been burned.
Is this Orange County thing?
Well, this isn't a pub or anything, but it's complicated, and, no, it's not reflecting any of this. So, that's, you know, that's-
So, just go back to the debt exclusion, okay, so what this option does is it, it funds devotion and then leaves us capacity to meet some of our short-term space need, the foreseeable short-term space need.
Exactly.
Actually, I know you haven't done the financial plan yet, but I know we've been carrying a classroom capacity line item, is that assumed to be part of the budget going forward?
Exactly, yep.
Now, what happens to the, we appropriated a million dollars for the devotion, Driscoll feasibility, does that get reprogrammed, or is that something you're thinking about?
Yeah, I mean, we just got the word, and, but, you know, I think we've somewhat been anticipating that, so, yes, we would reallocate that fund. So, I think I will do the remainder of the slides, which are really just to remind you of a few things as we get closer towards actually making a vote, it is this Board of Selectmen's authority to place an override question on the ballot, no one else can do that, and, well, it may not be a big issue, it does, I want to remind you that for general override, it will require a majority vote of this board to place on the ballot, three votes, but the debt exclusion will require a two-thirds vote, or four affirmative votes of this board. However, when it goes to the voters, in all cases, it's just a majority vote required for passage, but I did want you to be aware of that, distinguishing with this board placing a debt exclusion on the ballot requires a little higher plurality of vote. The other thing is, it does, you know, the only really outside limit is, you have to put this ballot question, this question on the ballot no less than 35 days prior to the election, that's not going to work for a couple of reasons, first of all, I do think that the town clerk needs even more time to print the ballot and other logistical things, but most important is, this community needs time to have, engage the community and have essentially a campaign, and that's why, next slide, Sean, I've, well, I'm going to go to the calendar at the end, so why don't we just go back to this, and then the other major issue, especially related to the override question, is there are two approaches, basically, if you want to split the question up, you could do it on a so-called menu approach, not unlike going to a restaurant and picking out different things independent of one another, or you could do it in a cumulative fashion, which is referred to as a pyramid approach, and so, you know, that takes a little bit of strategy as to what goes below, you know, lower and higher, but, so those are, those are two things I want you to keep in mind as we get closer to this. So, the proposed calendar, my, my understanding is the board wants to have at least another additional public hearing before it takes its vote, so I'm suggesting that happens in the earlier part of January, and then mid to late January, that you would actually adopt the questions to appear on the ballot. The next big milestone is proposing our budget, which, as you know, we've talked about essentially having two budget scenarios, one with an override and one without, or if you choose to have a menu with, you know, even more variations on that. I would like to mention that there is a provision in our bylaws that follows the state law that says when there's a new administration coming in, they have more time to submit a budget, and we in turn then are given a little bit additional time to do that, so February 17th is without that additional extension, and frankly, we're still considering whether we would take advantage of that, I am assuming that incoming Governor Baker will do that and won't submit his budget until March. We're going to have to, obviously, just kind of listen and read the tea leaves about what the risks are about putting our budget to bed, but frankly, if the board has already voted its override number, you know, I feel we probably will make the assumptions and go forward with the February timeframe, but we're still considering that.
Speaking of the governor and the most recently projected state deficits, is that going to roll around? I know our incoming governor has said he will protect municipal aid, but I just wonder if there are other things that we should be concerned about.
Well, we're concerned about that, because the governor's commitment, or the incoming governor's commitment was only for fiscal '15.
Right.
So, we're worried about '16 and beyond.
Right.
So, that's a major concern of ours, we're also faced with some issues at the GIC, and our 4% health insurance is, you know, questionable, but we'll see how that goes, we're not even near that point, so there are some big uncertainties, as there always is, but this year, it seems, with the override and the change in administration, it does exacerbate those a bit.
I'll just highlight that it's not just a new governor, we've got a new Senate president coming in as well, so it's three out of the, or two out of the three sort of major characters on Beacon Hill, with agenda-setting authority are going to be new to the ballgame.
When does the GIC announce its rates?
Probably close, like, closer to March.
Really, wow.
What would be the additional time if you were to use the governor, the incoming governor's extension, how, when would we be thinking about, or how much additional time would we be thinking about?
Seven days, I believe the bylaw was changed to, say, seven days after the governor issues his or her budget, which we believe is March 4th, so talking about March 11th, which, and the GIC rates, you just asked, would be right around the same time, too.
So, my question for this board is, do we intend to have a draft vote on the table for discussion at the public hearings that we want to convene?
It's, I was thinking about that.
I think that would be good, but I think we could have several that we're contemplating, but I think we need to give people something to respond to.
Right, right, I don't think we'll get good, I don't think we'll get a useful feedback in question.
We're going to hear more of the same that we've been hearing, which has been important, but we're looking for something more, more focused than we have, and I think we need some votes.
I'm just going to suggest, though, just thinking about calendar and schedule, that it might be helpful if we make an assumption that the normal February 17th financial plan coming out might be delayed a week or so, I mean, I feel like this is a situation where it's not wise to feel that we're being pressured into doing something, and I'm here to tell you that I doubt seriously that we are going to be successful if we have a public hearing as early as the 6th of January, just because-
I agree with you.
I think, you know, it's too confusing.
Then we have to make some decisions in the next meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think early January is probably the wrong date for the public hearing, I think it's more like mid-January, so I think we're talking about the second or third week.
The 13th or the 20th.
The third week.
Yeah.
Now, we've got a meeting coming up, you know, in two weeks from tonight, it's the middle of school vacation, I don't think it's an appropriate time for us to be putting things on the table.
No, I agree.
I do think that even before then, or at that meeting, if there's any other information, any other study session, any charts, graphs, testimony that we want to hear, that I do need to-
Selectman Franco and I were talking earlier today about that, and he was saying, he thought, and which I agree with, that it would be helpful to see these different plans, we've heard programs from the school department, but he'd sort of like to know, I think, actual, X number of teachers are funded in this one, X number of teaching specialists, math specialists, or whatever, and guidance counselors, and personnel numbers that would be included in that.
I think the school committee is going to be looking at that tomorrow night, and so after that meeting, they will be prepared, I believe.
Well, we heard a commitment from the superintendent at our last meeting, just over a week ago, that prior to the December break, they were going to produce a document that gave us some more specific numbers of program costs and maybe build a more complete proposal, so I look forward to receiving that document and anticipate we'll have it in the next-
Couple of days.
Couple of days.
I would anticipate that we'll have a discussion about that at our last meeting of the year.
Right, and while you, while we recognize that it's during the school vacation, given the calendar, it has to be a productive meeting where we're talking about substantive issues irrespective of the fact that we're in school vacation period, just to meet our calendar here.
Yeah, just to meet the deadlines we're setting.
I'm comfortable having a conversation about the direction we want to go in, I don't think this is a meeting where we can have, and I don't think it's feasible at this point, to have votes, potential votes on the table, which we discussed, but I think it's entirely appropriate for us to have a discussion about where we are, what our thoughts are, what's important, what direction we want to go in.
Yeah.
And also be better informed by the school committee's decisions tomorrow night.
Clearly.
So, then, the first Tuesday night in January is going to be January 6th, is it reasonable for us to think that we will have a draft vote or votes ready for, to kind of roll out and put on the table for January 6th?
That seems premature to me, but I'd shoot for the 13th.
So, if we don't do that-
We can be, we can put together a range of votes and numbers, but, you know, to what extent they're informed by this analysis, so, let me understand, you want to hear from the superintendent again, when? I don't know if we have to hear from the superintendent, but at our last meeting, the, you know, the information that the school committee is considering tomorrow night should be presented to us.
They were going to give us a chart or something, we hope, with more, some, more of the specifics.
When we get it, we will certainly share it with you. And we can organize a discussion around that, I don't know that the superintendent needs to be here for it, but let's see what it is.
You know, looking at the calendar, I'm thinking maybe the 13th, and then would be the, when we vote, some, we'll talk, get a sense of the numbers and then having-
Right, my question is, do you want a public hearing before the selectmen take a vote, or do we want to have a set of options that can be presented to the public hearing?
I want a set of all the last, I want a set of options, I want either, well, it could be that there's one proposed vote, or it could be that there's multiple proposed votes, but I want those on the table before our-
So, we settle on what options are on the table, I would suggest the 13th, which gives us two meetings to get to that, to get to that, those options on the table.
Okay.
And then we have the hearing on the 20th.
Hearings, well, again, I think I'd like to do what we did earlier, and that is have a morning and an evening meeting, hearing, and I know that's taxing on us, but I think it's called for.
And then, could we shoot for the 27th?
For a vote.
For a vote on what to put on the ballot.
On the ballot question.
How does that work for our calendar, for this calendar?
I think it works, I mean, I, frankly, I haven't heard much about the private campaign, but it's not something we would normally hear in the course, so I don't know if there's anything underway, hard to say, I'm not aware of it, but I can't believe it would really happen much before the end of January, anyway, so I think it works.
Okay, I think that sounds like a plan, Selectman Wyszynski, and I thank you for the-
Did you say that the hearing would be two on January 13th?
I'm not sure.
The hearing is the 20th. The day after Martin Luther King's birthday.
But if you're saying morning and evening?
Well, last, last time we did it, you know, one was an evening, it wasn't, no, it wasn't a Tuesday night deal, we did a special night for it.
Oh, yeah.
And then we did a, we didn't do the morning, the AM meeting wasn't the same day, it was the following week, I think, but, you know, I'm open to suggestions, but I think, I think this warrants two hearings and dedicated, dedicated hearings that we're not fighting with other agenda items.
Okay.
So, the exact dates of that, we'll figure, I don't think we have to determine those tonight, but.
And hopefully, we don't get snowed out.
Oh, we won't. Oh, we will, inevitably. And Mr. Kleckner, I was talking with some of our senior citizens about the potential upcoming override, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to have, I know in the past, some of the, the people who are running the private campaigns to advocate for an override have done this, but I think it, to be fair to citizens who may not want to kind of get on the website of the pros or the cons or whatever, I think it would be very good if our assessor's office could just, and I don't even view this as advocating for it, but information for a homeowner, if, if this passed, here's what your tax bill would be.
So I think, I do think, and Jonathan Murphy, our town council, would be probably better, as I understand, there can be challenges. So what happens is, for example, the assessor, assessing administrator, you ask him.
Yeah.
He provides it to us, becomes a public document, and then gets distributed by a private organization. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but I mean, this would be, if you go in there and you type in your address so they know what your taxes really are, not the mythical average home, but you could go on there and say, okay, this year I'm getting this much from the two and a half percent, plus if I voted for the operating override, that would be this much, plus if I voted for the debt exclusion override, that would be this much. And I mean, there could be a disclaimer that it might be.
So you're talking about sort of an online calculator posted on the.
Yeah, an online calculator thing.
Yeah, you know, last time the campaign did that, you're suggesting it be done by the town.
Yeah, I think people would feel, have a greater level of comfort if they were getting.
You suggesting that before a vote or?
No, this would be afterward.
Okay.
But I'm, I just want to.
So I guess we would need an opinion from council, whether we, whether we could.
Yeah, but running that set of numbers, well, I mean, it's just a calculation. I don't know why it would be an issue, but I agree you have to check. It's not, I don't think it's an advocacy thing. It's just an information thing of, you know, if you voted for this, here's what we anticipate would be the effect on your taxes. This is something people are very interested in from my discussions.
I agree. I think that's a discussion for a future night.
Well, let's, let's try to find out, A, can we do it, and B, whether it's difficult. My bet, my bet is that the mechanics of it are pretty straightforward. The question is, you know, is there any other issue that we haven't thought of?
Yeah.
Anything else that we want to instruct staff to have ready for us for discussion? I mentioned earlier a, averages of not, you know, regular two and a half percent tax bill increases in the different categories.
You know, one of the questions, procedural questions for us internally is, how are we going to assess each of the components of the proposed revenue package? And I'm thinking more on the fee side. So we've already heard that on some of the items, like extended day rent and renting gyms and, you know, stuff like that, it's, it's not going to raise the amount of money that's anticipated, that the override study committee anticipated. But then there are other items that are judgmental. Do we do a fifty thousand dollar cut of the library book budget? So, you know, how are we going to get through that? And I, don't answer that now, it's something we need to think about internally.
Procedural question.
Right.
Yep.
And so that's going to be, that has to be a piece of either next week or the, the next meeting or the meeting after. One of those meetings where we're getting down to the final number.
Okay. Good. Anything further? Thank you all. Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
And we're getting down to the wire on this, but I must say, I feel far more equipped to make this decision today than I did three, four months ago, so I thank you to the staff.
I'm still looking for that school department spreadsheet.
Yep.
Right.
Yes.
That's going to be key in helping us.
Assess the path forward.
Right, because otherwise we're picking, choosing numbers.
Still struggling, right, still struggling.
Our last agenda item for this evening is appointments to the following boards and commissions, Complete Streets Committee and the Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations Committee. These are both new committees. The Park and Rec Commission appointment is postponed. I turn the meeting over to Mr. Kleckner to propose motions for those committees.
Well, I have to say that I, I think I wasn't totally prepared for Complete Streets because I don't know how many we're supposed to have, and it doesn't appear in the chart.
I don't think we specified.
So do you want to tell me how many you think ought to be in there before we start?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I like eleven.
So then the six.
But is there, there's going to be a selectman on there?
Yeah.
So that's twelve.
Well, you probably do want an odd number. I believe in odd numbers, but. Yeah, but that wouldn't mean knocking one person off. I know, that's not a good plan. I'm, I'm not advocating it. I'm willing to put them all on.
Is the selectman going to be a voting member or a non-voting member? Did we stipulate that?
I don't think we did not.
So why don't we make, why don't we make the, well, no, why don't we make the selectman non-voting, and we don't have to worry about ties?
Then you've got your odd number. Any issue? I don't know.
That's solution.
I, I think selectmen should be voting members of these committees. I mean, I think those of us who work the hardest and dig out the most information should be able to vote on the final thing.
Well, but they, but the selectman will vote on the final thing eventually.
Yeah, the selectmen themselves will take a vote. This is a recommendation from a committee, so I, I would draw a line, at least distinction around that. I don't disagree with you in general, but this is an ad hoc committee, not going to be in, it's not a standing committee. Okay.
So I'll move that we appoint eleven members to the.
Eleven plus a.
Plus a non-voting member as a selectman.
Plus a non-voting selectman.
Non-voting select member.
All in favor, say aye. Daley, DeWitt.
Aye.
Wyszynski.
Aye.
Franco.
Aye.
Goldstein. Aye.
Drop the selectman monitor before. So I, I guess rather than.
Shall we name the selectmen, too?
Why don't I just name the, the people on the, the applicants, including, you guys will have to tell me the selectmen.
Okay.
And then perhaps the board can vote it as a full slate.
Sure.
John Bowman.
Aye.
Frank Carroll.
Aye.
Gustav Driesen.
Aye.
Scott Englander.
Aye.
Sherry Flagler.
Aye.
Michael Heineman.
Aye.
Linda Olsen Pelkey.
Mitchell.
Oh, Mitchell, excuse me, Mitchell Heineman. Lisa, Linda Olsen Pelkey.
Aye.
Seth Rubin.
Aye.
Nick Schmidt.
Aye.
Thomas J. Vitolo.
Aye.
Todd Waschburn.
Aye. Can we move a select chairperson?
I can't remember if somebody has already volunteered for that duty or not. Is there, is there a volunteer?
I was hoping Selectman Franco would do it. Well, he's, he's taking on the diversity.
He's doing one.
This is noise bylaw.
Oh, just.
Okay, all in favor of Selectman Wyszynski as the selectman representative, non-voting to the Complete Streets Study Committee, say aye.
Aye.
I should abstain. I should have said no.
So on the Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations Commission, which as you pointed out is our newest commission, there are thirteen applicants, including Mr. Chin, who you interviewed earlier this evening. This committee can be up to fifteen, but I think the idea was that we would move to appoint it sooner than later. The only issues that I have is we are supposed to create, stagger the terms. So I'm proposing that five members be at twenty seventeen, five at twenty sixteen, and five at twenty fifteen. I, I think rather than try to create a process here, we might just by chance do that.
Can I make a suggestion? How many people are returning from the prior commission? And perhaps for their, a reward for their prior service could be a longer term?
Alex Coleman, Ernest Frye, Brian Miles, Anthony Nero, Kelly Race, Enid Shapiro, Dwayne Tyndall are the returning.
And I would argue Sandy Batchelder has been.
He was a major voting member before.
No, no, but he's been attending many, many meetings for ten years.
Yes, no, I know, but then.
It's too many anyway.
It's too many, yeah.
Well, it was a thought.
It was a good thought, but I would just go, you know, take the order here, go one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, all the ones get the, so it's not alphabetical order, but all the ones get the, the three-year term, and the twos get the two-year term, and the threes get the.
That's as good a way as any.
Wait, I was going to vote for everybody, so you want us to?
No, no, no.
We're talking the terms.
It's just the term.
I will, I will do that after the fact.
A one-year term, a two-year term, and a three-year term, but you can vote for everybody.
We will assign terms, the length of the term.
Okay.
Based on that, so, but unless the board's not comfortable with that. But everyone would be appointed for at least a one-year term.
All right.
So I will read the role, if it's okay with the board.
Absolutely.
Sandy Batchelder, Jr.
Is this for the, that you're going to announce which term that would be?
Yeah, I'm sure I could figure that out. So did you say one?
Well, that would be a one-year.
Take all the ones and say, this is going to.
Longer term.
For the long term.
Okay. Sandy Batchelder, term expiring in twenty seventeen.
Aye.
I like that.
I got, I've got.
Okay.
John Malcolm Cawthorn, a term to expire in twenty sixteen.
Aye.
Aye.
Alex Coleman for a term to expire in twenty fifteen.
Aye.